Okay, good morning. Welcome, everybody. Staff meeting Tuesday, June the 4th. Commissioner Dennis had some prearranged travel. He won't be with us this morning. Commissioner Meister is joining us via Zoom. The rest of the gang is here. Tom, take it away.
Three things, Chairman, for this morning. Tanya and her team will talk about, give the commission and the public an update on the Calm Care Crisis Building Project. We have some time designated and Andrew's here, and I think some of you toured the 520 and 5 North Main courthouse campus to talk about the HVAC CIP issue. And then Chris Duncan is here. We, about a month or six weeks ago, he visited with you individually about a community dashboard concept, and he's here to display that to you and the public. So, Tanya, you will start us off.
Okay, good morning, Commissioners. So we have been working with Helix Architects and co-architects on the Community Crisis Center, and we have Doug Stockman here, who is the principal architect for Helix Architects. We've been working with them for approximately two months, and they have been working on the conceptual design. So they are here to share renderings, the layout of the floor plan and the programming. And I think it's very exciting work that they've been doing. So I thought it would be a good time just to share their progress on the building. And so would like to hand it over to Doug Stockman to walk us through. He'll go for about 20 minutes, and then we've got some time at the end if you have any questions.
Right.
But your packet that you have at your table here is what he's going to be going through.
Well, good morning, Mr. Stockman. Welcome.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you for giving us a chance to give you an update as to where we are at this time. Okay, I'm gonna share my screen. Please let me know if this is coming through. Everyone see the screen?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay. Well, as Tanya said, we just completed the first step in a multi-phase design process. So we just finished the concept design for the Community Crisis Center, and I'm going to give you a high-level summary. Some of these slides I'm going to go through rather quickly, just to try to keep this as high level as possible. But at any moment, I can go backwards and answer any questions that anyone may have of any aspect of where we are today. It's just a table of contents. We have sort of tried to provide a little bit of a narrative associated with the design. But this is essentially sort of a summary of kind of where we are today. For all of those, for those of you who may not know exactly where this project is located, it is at the southeast corner of English and Topeka. And the rest of the site is occupied by the Wichita Biomedical Center, which essentially is the rest of the parking lot that you see here. So the building in particular that we're working on is the building highlighted in red. These are a collection of images of the existing building as is today. And as you can see, it's in pretty good shape. I know some may see it as needing a little bit of help and love. And of course, that is the case with all older buildings, but we find the building to be in fairly good condition. There are some really interesting aspects to the interior. It's a solid building. It's in good shape. Needs some work, as I said, but we feel like the bones of the building are good and will benefit the Community Crisis Center very well as we sort of progress into the design phases and the more technical side of things. We started off the process with a quick analysis of the existing shell and interiors and highlighted a series of pieces and parts that really needed some repair. But in overall, the building again is in good shape. We do anticipate a complete window replacement to bring it up to current contemporary energy codes and to give greater comfort to the occupants as they sort of endeavor their work here, which is admirable, to say the least. This is the probably the least attractive elevation, that being one facing north. But as you'll see in our future red rings, we do plan to transform this elevation in particular. And again, just kind of finishing up that. Central County, yourselves, you did sort of commission a analysis of the structure of one wall in particular. And so that is the north wall, which there used to be an old vehicular ramp that had been removed. And since its removal, there's been some question as to the structural stability of that wall. So we're in the process of determining whether this temporary shoring is needed at the moment. And that's sort of an ongoing sort of process, but we'll come to that conclusion here pretty soon. We did go through a really extensive programming exercise with our partner and the Community Crisis Center. And the outcome of that has really been an effort to sort of project into the future the needs of the Community Crisis Center while maintaining a clear understanding of what is feasible within the existing structure. And so where this exercise really proved its biggest benefit is right sizing an initial idea of what the program needed to be with some tremendous amount of efficiencies through the design process and some reallocation of spaces in the program. And we basically were able to sort of achieve a very concise and efficient program. So everything fits within the existing shell of the building, which is about probably, I think, I think from the original program, about a 6,000-foot reduction in anticipated needs to fit within a 36,000-square-foot building. There is a small addition to the building that we're doing, but that's really to sort of create a new entry into the center. We have also been working very closely with the Wichita Biomedical Center team. A lot of our consultants are very similar, that being landscapes, civil engineers, and obviously the architects. And this has been very beneficial to seek ways to accommodate both parties on a common site, find common interests and ways to collaborate in the spaces in between the two buildings. You will see a property line that kind of divides the L-shaped corner from the southeast corner. And the biggest part of shared space is really going to be over the existing alley, which is planned to be vacated. But all of the existing utilities, for the most part, will remain underneath this alley. And so therefore, we all need to be sensitive to using them where we need them for the facilities, but also understanding that they really serve properties to the north and to the south. The other part of the common space is this loading dock that you see here down at the south end. Between working with the Wichita Biomedical Center and the Community Crisis Center, we were able to sort of arrive at some efficiencies here. By example, we do and have agreement with WBC to actually share dumpsters. And so therefore, we have, I think that was an update I gave everybody, but if not, I'm sorry. We met with WBC the day after we had our final meeting, so they're all in agreement with that. So what you will see in sort of a future site plan reflects that as well. There are also some variety of utilities that are gaining some efficiencies by keeping everything sort of in the shared zone. So this is our approach to the landscape. We've been thinking about this very holistically. We have all sort of envisioned and hope for a block in which all the occupants of both the Community Crisis Center and the WBC could really leverage all the outdoor spaces as best as possible throughout the year. So what you see here is the intention of creating a really walkable block. Plenty of trees, lots of shade cover for the summer months, and also a concentrated effort to really create a common green space for the two facilities to enjoy during those months that it's quite frankly tolerable, right? But through that, we've added some extra tree coverage and outdoor space. You'll see sort of the zone here where the existing alley exists. We have to keep that very minimally landscaped. And that is because we cannot have deep roots. We cannot sort of invasively create a situation where that really disturbs the utilities below grade. These are some conceptual images associated with some of the spaces that we envision creating, mainly that main green space. You can see tree covered zones with crushed gravel, opportunities for movable seating and benches for all users to enjoy. And here are some three-dimensional images of that main green space. You see WBC over here to the right, which has its own separate parking lot. So there will be no crossover between the parking lots. They are separate. But they all get to enjoy this communal space here. This is the Community Crisis Center's parking lot designated for itself. On the street, you will see improvements with respect to bike lanes. This does incorporate the recently adopted sort of street improvement plan. And we can, you'll see right here sort of the entry into the Community Crisis Center. Another view of the landscape area, and you see the WBC sort of here in the background. This is a clinic entry that the WBC has, so I think there's some very, there'll be some synergy associated with sort of the vibrancy of the space. A view from a pedestrian side. And then we'll sort of get into some of the renderings of the building itself. So what we've envisioned here is this main facade here you see on the left-hand side is pretty much existing with predominantly window replacement that we'll be looking at. We do have a few new openings that we're creating on the north side, but really the gem of the whole space will be this fully glass enclosure with a canopy welcoming patients with, this is just a placeholder for sign. We're not, we'll all sort of get to exactly what the right nomenclature will be for the sign. But a really transparent and a welcoming entry sequence. All of these materials and color palettes are sort of intended to sort of complement the WBC, but also be uniquely different. Colors are not final by any means at this point. They're a placeholder. The point of this concept design package is really to establish what the potential scope of the project will be, provide a cost estimate associated with that. And if that cost estimate proves to be within budget, then great, we can proceed. If that cost estimate proves to be slightly outside the budget, then we will obviously provide in the next phase ideas and thoughts about how to retract a little bit and right-size the scope so that when we go forward, we're staying within line. Some other images kind of as we move around the building, as I said before, full window replacement both on the first floor as well as the second floor. A little detail of the entry sequence into the lobby space. A view from the common area outside. This is a separate entry for SAC. And this actually occurs through the alleyway as well. And this provides loading and unloading for the building. Slight aerial view looking from the southeast corner, looking down. In this view, we kept the buildings white to sort of highlight the landscaping effort that we're endeavoring. This is a view of the Wichita Biomedical Center from the northeast corner. Sorry, I had to get my orientation right. And the Community Crisis Community Center is over here in the background. This would be from the northwest, looking down on the rooftop space they have. But hopefully, you can see sort of consistency in landscape design and streetscape all the way around the block, and that's very intentional. This is a shot of the loading dock area. You see here sort of the possibility of either ambulatory delivery or and/or law enforcement that would come through this secured loading dock area. This is for the Community Crisis Center. On the opposite side for the Wichita Biomedical Center, it would predominantly be loading and unloading as well as trash removal for both buildings and any other services or vendors that are needed for the facility. And that's all enclosed by a fenced-in gate. This is just a narrative that accompanies all the drawings, just to give the cost estimator an idea of what the finishes are for the project. Again, placeholder. And then I'll just kind of end on a floor plan of both the first floor and the second floor. What you see here is sort of an entry vestibule that's part of this glass enclosure. We have a oversized elevator to handle both gurney and also furniture removal and/or insertions and any other sort of bulk items that are needed. Two means of egress out of the space. The first stair is actually an open volume stair to the second floor. If you remember in the initial images, this part of the building was actually opened because of the clearing out of a vehicular ramp. And so we're using that as part of the new entry two-story lobby space. Reception and security here, which allows patients to come and visit the facility through a means of secure entry. SAC entry is over here to the right, which offers a separate entry. But if someone wanted to come into the main lobby, they can easily access the SAC lobby as well. At this level, we have patient rooms surrounding a common space with nursing stations here. And on the opposing side of the main hallway that connects down to this other loading and unloading zone for the center, we have transitional housing at the southeast corner and stabilization up here at the northeast corner. And then we also have a crisis observation unit right off the main lobby, the very northeast corner of the building. Each of them having nurse and work area stations at each location. The second floor is really where most of the staff will be and is in this kind of two-story barrel vaulted space. And as you can see here, there's a combination of conference rooms and patient meeting rooms. They sort of serve a dual purpose. We have the executive office with the security, another security desk at the top of the stairs. So both stair and elevator arise up to the securities zone with more patient seating out here. This is all staff beyond this secure point here. So the only public would be in this front zone, and then all staff would occur in the back half of the second floor. And so we have open workstations. We have private offices. And we have training rooms, training rooms that also offer us larger meeting spaces, wellness rooms, mothers' rooms. We have common men's and women's rooms. And we also have kind of a work cafe for the entire staff to enjoy on the second floor in this central location. And then finally, we have an emergency call center, which is more secured from the rest of the space. So this might be the only space where walls actually go all the way to the ceiling to provide good acoustic separation. And hopefully, that was concise, but also detailed enough to give everyone a sense for where we are today. And happy to take any questions or thoughts that anyone has at this moment.
Great. Well, thank you, Doug. That was incredibly concise and detailed. I got a couple of questions, and we'll open it up for the group. Anytime we do any development in downtown Wichita, everybody's favorite topic is parking. So what does code require of the biomed campus? How is it being fulfilled? Is there a cross-access agreement with Crisis Center, or is that intended to be separate? And what are we required to do in parking? Can you give us kind of a broad view of that?
Yep. So the parking lot can only accommodate 29 parking stalls, 28, 29 parking stalls at the moment. There really is no other way to get much more than that in that parking lot. There's a little bit of parallel street parking on the east side along Topeka. But like the Wichita Biomedical Center, parking is really going to be dependent on neighboring parking garages and any other surface parking lots that would be available to the facility itself. But we will, we will be short of where we would need to be by code.
By code. Okay. Tim, you might be able to help on this, or I see Joan's on too. We don't have a whole lot of parking over at Crisis Center now. We have some street parking on Main, but there are clients that are using that service. Do they typically come via and drive their cars there? Do we need more parking? Is this something that we need to make sure we can designate, or Joan, your thoughts on that?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I think, I think we'll be okay because there is a little bit of street parking, and we do have the alleyway for law enforcement, so they wouldn't have to camp out in our parking lot if they were bringing somebody or breaking somebody up. So I think, I think we'll be okay for guests. It'll be staff parking. That will be the challenge.
And right now, staff park in the county parking garage. And so that's, they'll be reliant on parking garage, whatever parking garage.
Okay. I just know it's a big conversation. Anytime we do any sort of downtown development. My last question, Doug, I don't, this may be more for Joan. On 63, the floor plans, I'm looking at the programs. Would you be able to maybe, I don't know if you can do it here, maybe an email might suffice to the commission. I'm really curious about what program services we're offering now versus what we will have in the new Calm Care Crisis Center, what incrementally we will be doing different, if anything at all.
I could provide you that summary. We're just increasing all the services, volume-wise, number-wise of beds.
Okay.
Yep.
Easy enough. Other questions? Commissioner Meister, if you, if you have a question, just unclick, mute, and fire away. Okay, same. None. It's pretty good, Doug. You obviously did a great job.
Well, I had an incredible group of people to work with on this project, so I appreciate Joan and Tanya and Andrew and a whole bunch of other people that have been really, really positive about this and have provided tremendous amount of input and collaboration. So I appreciate it, everybody.
Appreciate your help. I guess the only question I have, and it couldn't be for Andrew and Tanya choose. Can you give us timeline on when we're moving some dirt and what the expected timeline on this is at this point?
You know, actually, I might ask Doug on this. Doug, do you have a timeline on when we're looking? I know we're trying to kind of time it with Biomed, but we may be a little bit ahead of their schedule. So I might ask, lean on you a little bit on that.
Sure. Actually, I think in a strange way, Biomed is actually a few months ahead of us, but they're obviously a bigger facility. So we are, I guess, I would say we're playing catch-up. And they will, they will be able to, Wichita Biomedical Center will be able to sort of obtain or at least seek their first building permits as of, I think, September of this year. We will fall behind that more like towards the end of this, of this year, 2024. But because of the nature of our project is so much smaller in terms of scale, it will catch up. And the idea would be that we're somewhat simultaneously under construction. The intent of WBC is to be done by the summer of 2026, I believe. So I think, I don't think there'll be any reason why we would not be open sooner than that. That'll be somewhat dependent on either, I can't recall the process of which you'll be contracting with a general contractor or a CM, whichever this case may be, but they'll obviously have to weigh in on timeframe for construction. I would anticipate somewhere between 12 and 14 months for construction.
Okay.
Now, if, if there's any reason for us to speed up a little bit, there's some room in the, in our design schedule to do so as well. So it's just dependent on how things progress.
So, Tanya, are we thinking summer of 2026 as well?
I think so, or if we can, if we can move it along a little bit faster. I mean, I think we will. This won't be a construction manager at risk. This will be a hard bid, so.
Understood. Okay, that's helpful. Okay, other questions? Hey, Doug, thank you so much for all the work you're doing on the project.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. Okay. Thanks, everyone.
Bye.
Thanks, Doug.
Okay, HVAC discussion, if any needed.
Okay, Commissioners, you took a tour last week with Andrew at the adult detention facility regarding the building automation system. So we just wanted to loop back and ask if you had any additional questions, if you need any follow-up information. And Andrew is here this morning to answer those questions or give you follow-up information that you need. Okay, any questions?
Yes, I get the ball started here. Thank you, Chairman. You know, I understand the, I guess, this estimate, this estimate that we're talking about is apparently to have a central control of numerous buildings. I'm not sure how much of the cost is tied to that, that part of this. I know that you probably need to have some, some control within each building. And I think the jail has some big needs. I'm not so sure that the rest of it has as big of needs. And so when we do CIP both this year, are we approving just the first part for the jail? And then the concept of making this a central, centrally located, central control of numerous buildings. I don't, again, I don't know how much cost is tied to that part of this. So I guess I'd like to know that, too.
So what was proposed in your CIP hearing a few weeks ago was to stagger this over three years. Year one was to focus on the adult detention facility, and that was the one where Andrew had the opportunity to really go through and look at those estimates and tighten the dollars. That estimate for the adult detention facility alone was just under $3 million. And remember, this is all cash-funded. So when you guys approve a budget, typically if we break out CIP, we break out bond-funded CIP, not cash-funded CIP, because the cash-funded CIP is just a part of the overall budget. So if that's something that you all are looking to do, Lauren and I will need to do a little strategizing as to how to do that. But to your point, Commissioner, we do have two more years afterwards that have not had the same value engineering done yet. And it does include many other buildings, not just the adult detention facility. So in 2026, we have 5.5 million planned for. And then in 2027, we have 2.9 million planned for. But again, because this is a cash-funded project, all you guys are actually truly authorizing is work to be done in 2025. And then we have to come back to you with a 2026 budget that will include cash funding. And hopefully, by then, we'll have a much tightened-up figure. And so I'll let Andrew speak to the other buildings that are included, if that would be helpful.
Correct. So in 2025, we were doing only the adult detention facility. Ideally, all these buildings would be packaged together. And it would give us, when we put it out to bid, it would give us one software platform that controls all these buildings. Because we've separated it out three different years, it basically turned it into three different projects when we go out to bid. And then we don't have control on what kind of software program we're going to get. So we may end up with three different software programs running ADF in 2025, the bundle facilities in 2026, and the bundle facilities in 2027.
And again, just to make, I guess, my point is, I'm not so sure that having a separate computer monitoring and control is necessarily a bad thing. I don't know if there's a huge savings by having these things connected to each other and having one overarching piece of software. I don't know how that ties into some type of efficiency that hasn't been communicated yet. And I mean, let me change my question slightly here. If we did not do this, obviously, there's components and parts in the jail that need to be fixed because there's some broken pieces and parts. You know, the, there's, this is largely electromechanical system that manages heating and air conditioning and moves that heat and air conditioning around that facility. Most of it, I think, is done by boilers and chillers. And so there's hot water, cold water that's used through radiation, heat exchangers and that type of thing. There's valves, there's sensors, there is, there's some type of computer control that knows what needs to happen to move the heat and air conditioning where it needs to go at the right time. So there is some control there, there. I don't believe that everything's broken. I guess if we didn't do this and you fix that broken valve and this broken temperature sensor and this stud damper, what would be the, in other words, these electromechanical pieces and parts are going to fail even in the future. We agreed this today. It sounds to me like we're doing a wholesale change on everything. The, all of the sensors, all the, all the mechanical motors, all the dampers, all the, maybe not the chiller, maybe not the heat exchanger, maybe not the boiler, but everything else. New wiring, new computers, new sensors. And again, I'm just wondering right now, what, what, I know there's a list of some things that are not working, but those things could be fixed. Those dampers could be fixed, those valves could be repaired. And some of the monitoring circuits, the small monitoring circuits that talks to a central computer in that building, that could be upgraded. I'm not, I'm not convinced that this is a wholesale repair that needs to take this level of, of investment. Because again, and I'm just thinking about other buildings I'm familiar with. You know, there's a point where you do replace the big pieces, the chillers, the boilers, and the heat exchangers and things like that. The wiring should be sufficient for what we're doing today and in the, in the future. And then everything else is basically control. It's valves and dampers and, and sensors to know what's happening and forces, if you should say, reconfigures the system in some automated fashion to move that, that cold or heat where it needs to go at the appropriate time. So I guess, I know there are some problems. And those, those problems do need to be addressed, and maybe the computerized monitoring needs to be upgraded. I'm not convinced the wholesale change needs to happen throughout the facility as it was, as it was described. So I'm just wondering, if we did not do this, what's the fallback?
So you named a number of concerns, and hopefully I can touch on every one. When it comes to the software, the software is no longer supported. It's 20 years plus old. The computers that the software runs on, we need to replace, and we can't replace those computers because that software is no longer compatible with new technology. Kind of have the same thing with valves. There's valves. Kind of have the same thing with valves. As valves, actuators, things out in the field go bad and we replace them. Sometimes those actuators and those sensors, those things communicate to the old software that we have. Sometimes we lose some of that communication. And when you lose that communication, now the system's not running as efficiently. We don't have, we don't necessarily know what's happening in the field. As some of these components fail, the system can compensate for it. And so you can end up with rooms that are being heated and cooled simultaneously because you may have a valve that's leaking by and we don't know it. So part of this project will commission the building and all the HVAC system to identify what's working, what's not working. And then we have a budget in place to replace some of these items, but not all of them. Some of the sensors will be replaced, but we don't have a budget to replace every sensor, every valve actuator, every damper. That's part of where the reduction came in is initially, our initial budget was to do that. When we went through and scrutinized our budget to try to reduce it down, we don't believe every damper is bad. We don't believe every actuator and every sensor is bad. And that's where our estimate came in to try to reduce that down to what do we think is actually bad and what's going to have to be replaced out in the field.
And, and yes, one other thought is, you know, generally speaking, for computers and software, we, software, we don't use CIP. This is changing. Moving this to CIP is, again, technology changes. And I know that in five years from now, someone's going to say, well, the, the world has changed. We should do something different. Once again, software is always upgraded, is always being upgraded and computing systems are always being upgraded. So to use CIP for that, it, it is, it is something we've not done in the past, I don't think, generally speaking. She's saying I'm wrong. Go ahead.
So when it is so inherently a part of the building, that separating one from the other can exist, that's what makes it CIP. And so, for example, master control, that it's a computerized system that controls all of the ingress and egress for cells in the jail, that becomes a CIP project because it is inherent to the way that building works. It's going to be the same thing with this because it's actually controlling the, the facility itself. And for example, if we sold the building, it would go with the building. Not that anyone's going to buy the jail anytime soon. But if we did, it would go with it. And that's kind of how we look at the distinction between CIP versus TRB. But you're exactly right. It is, it's complicated and, and we have to do a deep dive analysis each time to figure out which is the right bucket of money is.
So back to my, one of my questions a minute ago was, if we don't approve the CIP, can this system be, can the pieces and parts that are failing? Can they be upgraded? Can the, can the computer and the, and the monitoring of the system be upgraded without doing the CIP amendment? How much of this is that? How much of this question today relates to that, to that computer, that software?
I don't have the software component broken out. It's, it's intertwined with the entire estimate to do the project. Right now, what we, what we do is that when things fail, we replace them out in the field to try to keep the facility operational. There is some caveats to that that are detrimental to how we're running the facility. This facility is also our largest consumer of utilities. And so we try to be as efficient as possible. And without having the support of the software that's running the facility, if that software were to crash, we would be basically driving the facility blind, not knowing temperatures in rooms, not knowing how equipment was performing. This is running the chillers and the boilers. So we can turn those things on manually, but we lose the capacity to ramp them up and kind of throttle them down as demand requires it. And you lose that efficiency and it's running all the time. So you turn the heat on in one room, you can't throttle it up and down. It's just running full blast. So it makes it very difficult to manage and the occupants of the building suffer.
And I'm not suggesting we would stay in the manual mode. I'm suggesting that as these things fail and you, and you do that temporarily to get by for a short time until a repair is in place, we would not want to stay in a manual mode for too long. And this idea, for example, you mentioned maybe a system is set up where your air conditioning and heating at the same time. Again, that sounds ridiculous, but we wouldn't leave it that way. We would discover that, we would fix it. We're not going to be content to leave it that way. We're not going to be content to manually manage the system. The question is, you know, if we didn't do this as a, as a system replacement, so to speak, what would we do? And I think the end of the day is we would, was, it's asked me like, what, what, the, the big part of this is really the computer within that building and then the software that manages that particular building is a, is a upgrade that needs to happen at one, one, one time. But without, you know, outside of that, everything else is just system components. Everything is system components. It's all electromechanical sensors and controls. And that computerized system needs to interface with all that electromechanical stuff through wiring. And there's, there's, so it knows what's happening in each place. The computer is a, is a upgrade that needs to happen at one time. I agree with that. But this idea that we would simply live in a failed system and do this man, you know, manually as a justification necessarily to do a wholesale swap out. I'm not so sure that I agree with that. I, I think the computer piece of this is a, is a probably a necessary thing. Sounds like it's not, the software's no longer supported and, and the, and the system needs to be upgraded on that part of it. I'm just not sure about the rest of it. It's my question.
The, the rest of our estimate is mostly, I, I think most of the cost is regarding the failed equipment that's out in the field. I don't think it's the software and I don't think it's the computer. And all right, Ashray is a group of architects, engineers and contractors nationwide that they recommend replacement. Useful life expectancy of systems like this is 15 years. We're beyond 20. So we're trying to get the most out of the building that we can before we do these kind of investments. And at this point, I, I think it's time that, that we address this facility. And this is the worst facility that we have.
What was that name of that company again?
Ashray.
Was there, was there, was there a main thing in, what, what's their main purpose in life?
Uh, it's HVAC to research new technology and.
Do you see, do you see why, again, I, I know they've got a narrative, they have an opinion, but they're also into upgrading buildings as their business model. So they have a conflict of interest for us to trust their opinion in this case. Their job is to sell upgraded equipment and modify buildings. That's what they do. So yeah, they may be experts, you know, in terms of what they do, but just because that's their opinion, doesn't necessarily we have to agree to their opinion. My, again, let me just say, everything in that entire building. By the way, if we have a lot of stuff that's failed, this gets back to a, a policy of, of maintenance. When a valve fails, you, you need to, you need to schedule a repair to that valve. You don't just put it off. And so if we, we have a lot of failed stuff in that building, that, that tells us we have a policy challenge to let things get to that point. We should be fixing things as they break. We shouldn't have a, a huge wholesale swap out of a system because we have a lot of failed stuff. So that's, that's a policy decision that we need to be willing to support repairs as they are needed. So we don't have a, a building full of problems like this. But what we're, really, really needs to happen, the greatest justification is the computer and software that manages this entire system for this building. But the failed stuff throughout that building, it, correct me if I'm wrong, but why isn't that just a maintenance issue that's been taken care of over time? Why are we dealing with it as a wholesale issue today?
We do make those repairs. As, as things fail, we make those repairs. There are things that we believe that are out there that we don't know about that have failed. And this project will resolve those.
And to speak to that, so the CIP committee was persuaded that this was something that was necessary after much debate and pushing really hard back on Andrew because none of us like the, the dollars associated with this. But our understanding from Andrew and from Kendall, who's over in that facility, is that we do know that right now there is heating and cooling happening in the same space. We do know that there are issues like that. We know that there are communications breakdowns out where they're not getting the readings they need to in order to, to maintain that facility. My concern, honestly, and I don't want to delve into it too deeply in this setting, is liability. Should we have in the middle of summer, like I just read this morning, they're predicting a record number of 100-plus degree days. And we don't have a system that can control air conditioning and we have more than a thousand people in our custody that we are responsible for who have a lot of rights under federal law. And what kind of jeopardy are we potentially exposing ourselves to? So that is why of the, the three years, the adult detention facility is the one that is highest on my priority list because of the potential unintentional consequences of, if we don't address this, the others, I think, are up for debate and discussion. But this one is one that I, I personally worry about the flip side of, if we do not do it. So we can have that conversation separately in a, in a separate setting, but that would be something I'd like you to consider too.
I don't want to spend too much time. I've already said too much. I'll probably already, but just to your point, the issue where we're air conditioning and heating the same space, is that a, is that a control issue or is that a, is a failed component issue?
But my understanding is it's a control issue. The, the computer doesn't know it's happening and so it's reading that it's warm, so it's cooling, but then they're working.
So if the valves and the sensors are working, then we get the new computer, they'll take care of that problem. I agree. And I support the idea of a computer and the, and software to manage the, the system. If it's a failed component, then let's get it fixed. But if it's simply software, I understand the point and I'm supportive of that. Thanks.
Well, and one of the things maybe Andrew, we could work on is getting with the vendor to understand what that cost is and then potentially deal with the rest after they've had a chance to scrutinize. And we could do a, a CIP amendment to increase the overall cost after they've had a chance to review.
So it's going to be a combination of both. We're going to have some valves that it, it's telling the computer that it's closed all the way, but in actuality it's not. And there's hot water leaking by. And so you have to, it requires more cold water to compensate for it.
And that's a failed component. So without a CIP amendment, let's get that fixed. That's, that's a building maintenance issue. If we have a failed valve, it's not closing the way it should be closed. It, it doesn't matter what we do on the CIP, CIP amendment, that valve must be fixed.
And that's why I think if we break it out separately, we will know once those, that new software is there, how many are broken down. We suspect that there's a lot because it's 20 plus years. I mean, the building is worth $130 million. It's honestly a $3 million investment relative to that seems relatively fair. But I think that is one thing we can look at is trying to break this out even more in the CIP and then come back to you with a CIP amendment. Once we have some specific dollars to actually go in and improve all of that, because I think it's going to be more than just a maintenance issue when they really get in and see how many issues they detect. So if that's something the commissioner is interested in doing, I think we can try to talk about that.
I just, a comment and a real quick question. I, I, where my head's at on this still is I, after touring the zoo and talking to people, I, I do see that we have some needs at the, sorry, not the zoo, the jail. There's a difference. Maybe, maybe not for the animals, but, but the, there, there is some needs at the detention facility. I fully understand that. I, I, I have a lot of heartburn on the other two years of the CIP. And I think that we want to have a broader discussion of what that looks like. But this is a cash deal. So we are only looking at 2025, and that is just the adult detention facility, correct?
That's correct. And we'll, we'll come back to you because it is cash funded. We'll have to come back to you through the 2026 budget process and have, have a cash funded portion at that time too.
Okay. Have we ever, have we done any math on what, because obviously there's issues, heating, cooling a space. Have there been any math of efficiencies gained in utilities that you could share with us if?
I don't have them with me, but I know Andrew has presented that to us in the past.
Yeah, I have something from a previous vendor. The engineering firm that we used this year to help develop this estimate has not produced an efficiency cost. I will tell you that we are trying to make some efforts to be as efficient as possible, but it's not going to pay off the investment that we're making back in the building.
Okay. All right. Any other questions on this too? Okay. Let's move on.
So Commissioners, as the manager alluded to, about six weeks ago or so, we met with each of you to share the conceptual idea of this community dashboard. It was still a little bit rough around the edges, still had some things to be vetted out by some of the departmental folks. But we have, I think, all but one that has been accomplished. And wanted to, and, and we took feedback from you and made those improvements to it. So we wanted to get this in front of you today and give the opportunity for the public to see it. And give you a little more formalized background of how this came to be. So I'm, without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to the author of this project, Chris Duncan, out of our ERP group.
Hey, good morning, Chris.
Morning. Again, I have a history of being in budget office and over with our enterprise resource training. So that, uh, that's the source of where this has come from, like with, with departments, with our business intelligence, they are constantly looking at measures internally, building their own reports, monitoring their day-to-days. And it makes too, makes too much sense to not put some of this out to the public. And we'll be trying to do something similar 2005-ish with 900 measures that would go up and down. It never really took off. It never really worked right. This is more of a nimble approach, put out 36 measures and if departments come along for the ride, we'll have their own dashboard. Will we link to that and they go into their performance? We already have some of those out there already. EMS is such a product, using the same software that we're using here. Sheriff has an interest in expanding what he has out there. HR is on my list next. They're doing more with their data as well. So with that said, we, we started with a, a steering team and we met over Fridays for several months. We came up with ideas of what to look for, what's measurable, what makes sense, what's tolerable. Does require a whole lot to come up with measures, but they're hot and made particularly for that. Timeline for going forward, of course, showing you guys again what we've done so far. Taking any more feedback that can be obtained from you or from department heads. Building this webpage with communications for face the public and then eventually go live within July. And then our steering team will meet back again and start doing reviews because it's not just put it out there and we're done. It's a living kind of thing. There's going to be more priorities you may have. You're going to want to select something in and out. So in that direction, we'll keep evolving. We're doing measures. Are we measuring the right things? Sometimes priorities change and we change the dashboard here. Again, with the measures, it's 36 that are going to be shown in this at the various same dashboard, but that'll spring off to others. We're close to having half of it just automated where I don't have to do anything. There are two websites I gotta go out to. I gotta get unemployment rates. I gotta get utility bills. But that's, that's a month that I have five or 10 minutes and it's done. Again, 90, almost 90% are going to be at least monthly. We have a few that are, can be weekly or daily if we choose to show those daily. So that helps with that. The two recent ones, we've got one incorporated already with the sheriff and that was kind of considered a new jail management software. So we have their daily population out there now. Traffic accidents, we have, it looks really good. We just need to validate the 911 that they're seeing, they see on their end. And that could be, you need to, so. Again, some of the non-automated measures, even though they're not automated, I think data dumps from them and it's just a matter of me swapping on a spreadsheet and then points that, there's nothing that people are like, handbrake people are doing for the most part. Like the fire calls, I get a monthly scheduled report once the month ends. I get all their data and I go to write it. So it's ready to go on my data. And again, the responsibilities of the departments are, you know, make sure they send the data if it's not automated. Try to push for automation because that's what we do with our business intelligent tool with SAP. They have enhancements, suggest them or work with people who are on the steering team. And then submit those new measures or propose the replacements. And then engage us if they want to go and get specific dashboards. So they can control a little bit more of their own narrative of what they want. And these are just some screenshots of some of those that are out there. Finance has a couple where they have their CIP projects, their open checkbook is out there. CDVO has kind of mimicked some of that with their open checkbook with their items there. And also they have one with all of their annual things that they do for their annual report that's out there. And then of course EMS applied, I think they refreshed that here. And then these are some of the people who definitely helped me along with doing this. This was the first Duncan project. As much as it would have liked to, I value what people add and we were able to come up with sometimes consensus and new ideas of what we should. But we, we did follow along with what IC May suggests, with GFOA, the financial organization. There are some good resources out there. And measure what we should. That, I don't know if you want to see the dashboard again, or if you still have the access to it.
Let's pull it up. I think since those that are viewing on public, I think it'd be helpful.
Let's pull it up. I think since those that are viewing on public, I think it'd be helpful.
Again, it is interactive in a way if you push the button. So if I want to see more about safe, secure communities, I go down a little bit. I get a little bit of a narrative. Uh, EMS, again, if I click there. I jump into their results and it's just a daily count of, uh, calls and the number of patients they've dealt with. There's some interactivity here. Where you can put them on. You want to compare Januaries for all the, in those different years, you can see if they were up and down in certain ones. He wanted to relate to March. When that hit, there was definitely a drag in their numbers when they dropped. Um, all types of stuff that starts poorly. But, uh, along with that, here's where you can jump off and go to the EMS. Dashboard and it takes you right to theirs. And so you can dive into that. And back at the dashboard. You can navigate back to the public safety items or you go to the homepage. You can go dive into type of what we've dealt with. And those are just six of the measures we came up with. I picked up my boss and filled out the health test. And we can see what the numbers are. But this is, this is one that's automated and I get a button once a month or once a week. And I can see the numbers that have been updated.
Chris, when we met last, I told you how impressed I was with just the amount of data points that have to be inserted into the system. On the other side of the coin, I think this is just another effort of transparent government. Um, where people can access data themselves to see the throughputs and to see KPIs and what we measure. Um, so I'm incredibly impressed with this. When is this live again?
Whenever we can incorporate with communications, put it on the webpage.
Exactly. That was my second question was where is it going to be housed? Is separate? It'll be housed through our website. We have a new website coming too. So. It'll be something prominent on the homepage or, okay. Anybody whose job that is, any ideas on where they're gonna house this thing? It's not gonna be buried. I, I, I think this is wise to celebrate this thing.
Um, Tanya, can you give an update on, this is gonna dovetail into a new website, potentially where, where we're at with that project, where Nicole's at?
I'd have to get with Nicole on that. Um, I, I'm, I don't know, right?
I'm understanding this right, Chris. The goal is to roll this in mid-July. Under the existing website, we'll predominantly display it on a title screen there. And then as we develop the new website, we'll implement that in. I, I see this as, as a consumer out there, gonna be one of the, the hot links that people are gonna want to get to.
So this is not gonna be embedded into our website. This will be a link that'll take you to a different site.
It is, but it looks like it's there.
Yeah, correct. I just, there's just a lot here that.
Yeah. Believe it or not, it's up to the front. So I came up with this several years ago and got rid of a vendor.
Okay, yeah.
So. Fortunately, I learned just this week, our SAP tool, it's finally looking at doing public facing items. So with that, there's a lot more of this to be automated in the future.
Incredible. Good, very good. Mission out?
Boy, this is exciting. Um, I don't know if it's planned or not, but it will be like a collector page of all the various. Uh, displays that you can get to. You show it here, but I want to make sure there's a page somewhere in the county website. That shows all the various dashboards that you can, you can, uh, explore. So a collector page, if you will. I understand if you'd like to, let's say the, the, uh, health department webpage, you might see a dashboard that relates to their. Their part of the county, uh, services, but. Might be also nice to, you know, GIS is kind of like this. We see the my local taxes as numerous places. Um, so again, I think there, there should be a collector page. If I, if somebody want to be a data nerd and go say, let's look at, uh, Central County and see what we can find in terms of. You know, what's interesting. You'd be able to see all the data in one spot where it is, uh, uh, might be, open your eyes to things you may not even know to think about. But you can see it right there and you know to explore it. Second of all, I, I think on each page, there should be a, uh, maybe an about or something that talks about. Where is the data pulled from and when was the last, I don't think you can do this automatically or not. But if you ask to know the snapshot was pulled, the data was pulled, what date? Other words, if I'm looking at year old data or six month old data or. Maybe the, the people who provide the data to us, they have stagnant data. Um, be asked to know where we got the data and what data we pulled the data from, where were the sources? And how, you know, or how, or maybe how often. I'll just say this, I, I, I was listening to a, uh. A leader at the state legislature a couple of days ago, when they made a very. Very strange comment, uh, as they were speaking. And I thought to myself, they are wrong. I don't think they know that they're wrong. But I would really love to see him provide his source of data because I know that he's incorrect. So again, I, I really think that if we're gonna provide data. For data nerds, we want to know where did that data come from? Because it really does change, um. Our, our ability to trust what we're looking at. So I think that's a big deal. And then second of all, I would say, uh, I guess that's all my points. Oh, you did mention on one page here that the most cases, the data is. Is eighty-six percent of measures are updated monthly or less. When you mean or less, you mean more frequently or less often?
Right now, for the most part, the ones that I am tied to our SAP product or get data from it. I do it weekly. I, I have that stuff run on Sunday. On Monday's morning, I come and hit a button. Cause it will refresh it all at the same time.
So you said or less, you mean more often?
Yeah.
Okay.
And if I get somebody who emails me their data late or early, then I'll put it in there and hit a button and takes care of the whole thing. So Mike's IT helps us stats, we're running every night. And I run this on a Wednesday instead of Monday. It's gonna grab the last three days with the.
All right. Thank you, Greg. Last question. Is there a fiscal note to this or is there, is this just embedded into your department, Mike? Chris is the fiscal note?
Yeah, Chris is the fiscal note. No, uh, it's, uh, an annual, uh, license that we pay. Like Chris said, I think it's. Four hundred dollars.
This is wonderful.
Nothing extra.
Well, Mike, Chris, thanks for your work on this. Really do think this is a big deal.
If it's, if it's easier to put that information about as a, uh, maybe a, a link that says. For example, on the dashboard itself may not say where the data came from, but you can click another. Link on that same homepage, the same home collector page and say. About the dashboards and you could see a, maybe a, a static list of saying where the data, you know, you can put links there where the data gets pulled from or something. Just a way that's, so again, if you're, if you're drilling into it, want to find the data, at least it's there somewhere. I don't know that it has to be necessarily on the exact dashboard that you're looking at. That makes sense.
I took your book in high school. I made fun of the fact that I did this. One of my ever done. But it's the, the poverty of attention if you put too much information. So. I, I can do little buttons and things whereas we hover over them. Uh, you can see the tool tips of the data like that. Uh. Trying to think what election was one. Like I could put buttons like this that show the information, but for like this sake, this one just says if you wanna go register. Or check your voter registration, it jumps to the election website. So I could do little buttons like that. That way I don't fog up too much of the strain of a lot of verbiage. But they can be a consistent button. Hey, this is. So I can do something like that. It's, they follow the tool.
I think that's great. And again, if there's, if there's, uh, stuff that clutters up the page, you don't want to clutter it up. But you put it on a separate page that maybe talks about all the dashboards. That's okay with me. That'd be great. Thing, either way it's fine. Thanks.
Really good. Thanks again for this, Chris. Tom, anything else? Kelly Arnold, you hear anything from you?
All's good.
All was good in the clerk's office. Okay. Well, I guess we'll see everybody tomorrow morning, nine AM.